What am I supposed to do?
Uh, we thought you were reading with Andrew.
Reading.
I thought he came through.
I just sit here and read. I guess so. No, he said we started out over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it going?
Yep.
Did all data first question? What do you got on the hell?
We're live now, but we're waiting for... They'd let people come on, so we're waiting for Andrew to come in.
We're live?
Yeah.
Those people on TV right now?
Uh, no, it's right here. Right now, it's just show the chairs.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're in us?
Probably good. We are live.
Alright.
Great.
Yep.
Hello, everyone. Andrew Shealy here, I'm joined by RD Hohenfeld. We're the two primary reporters on the Rolla City Council beat for the newspaper here. Tonight, we are hosting an equal time Q and A for Rolla City Council candidates in preparation for the April municipal election. Phelps County Focus gave the candidates four issue topics ahead of time, so they could research the issue and provide a thoughtful answer. Two additional questions come from our readers, and were not given to the candidates before tonight. We did a random drawing to determine the order tonight, and we will be starting with our Ward One candidates. Thank you, and I'll go get the candidates now.
Can you all sit down and scoot to this one?
This one.
I'll have a need.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Alrighty, folks. We're gonna give you each thirty seconds to introduce yourself, and please tell us why you're running for city council. And Terry, we are gonna begin with you.
My name is Terry Higgins, and I've spent the last two years representing the people of Ward One. Um, I will not go into my career stuff, but uh, we moved here in nineteen eighty-three, and it's been a fabulous move. Um, I feel like I'm just getting my footing on city council, and I would love to continue the work that's been done. I feel that I've proven to the people I represent that I'm a strong voice, and when it comes to tough decisions.
Thank you. Alright, Josh, thirty seconds to you.
My name is Joshua Vroman. I have been a Rolla resident for twenty-one years. I'm a believer in God, a husband, and a father of five. Uh, this community is my home, where I raised my family, and I would like to help ensure that this community is safe, and also financially sound. I am driven to serve my family, my community, and my country.
Thank you. Alrighty, folks. We are now gonna have six questions. The first four were compiled by our newsroom staff, and the final two were submitted by our readers. You'll have one minute to answer each question. Josh, we will start with you for our first topic. And that topic is economic development. The question, "In recent years, Rolla has seen many large commercial developments come to town and new businesses open. However, other smaller businesses have struggled and closed. What policies or efforts should be used to support local businesses and continue Rolla's overall economic development?" You have one minute, thank you.
Um, in my opinion, there's a high chance that the businesses that have closed in the last two years were because of government's response to COVID. I feel that it is wrong for government to choose which businesses are essential and which ones are not. A person who is working is essential to the financial well-being of their family or themselves. Um, Section Two of the Missouri Constitution states that "All persons have a natural right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and the enjoyment of their gains of their own industry." Um, if elected, the one thing I can say is that I would never vote to shut down or restrict a business. As for policies or efforts, I will make a concerted effort to work hard and bring in, uh, industrial businesses back into Rolla. Um, I've spoken with many other business owners in the Rolla area who have ideas. Uh, one specifically talks about focusing on the airport, and that's kind of where I wanna take things.
Thank you. Terry, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, thank you.
One minute to you.
Okay. Uh, Rolla has offered incentives to large businesses, which benefits us all as well as them. Uh, we have welcomed many new businesses in the last few years. Uh, the businesses have opened up new and better job opportunities. However, I also feel that it's dire that we start coming up with incentives and shine a light on what our small businesses need. Uh, as a city, making sure that we maintain and improve our business districts is also key. Parking lots to serve the influx of customers, street and sidewalk maintenance, making sure our city is clean and safe. Those things should help entice businesses, large and small, to our community and help them thrive. This is an interesting time right now that we can't find enough people to, uh, serve the businesses, and, uh, it's a little perplexing, and I know the businesses have suffered from that.
Thank you. With our second topic, I'm gonna turn things over to RD.
Our second topic is university expansion. Missouri S and T has announced the North Star goal of growing its enrollment to twelve thousand students by twenty thirty. Do you feel the campus's growth is good or bad for Rolla? How will you work with Missouri S and T on this issue?
Terry, one minute to you.
Thank you. I feel that the expansion is a very good thing for Rolla. Our economy can prosper from it. The university provides an excellent opportunity to our local youth to get a quality education and not have to go elsewhere. If Rolla's a desirable city with good employment opportunities, those graduates, as well as graduates from other places, should choose to stay here and continue our growth as a city. We'll need to have a solid plan to ensure our infrastructure and housing keeps up with that potential growth, however. Um, the university has worked well with us. It's worked well with our, uh, police department, and I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Josh, one minute to you.
Uh, Rolla was founded in eighteen forty-two. In the state of Missouri officially established Rolla in eighteen fifty-eight. Missouri S and T was founded twelve years later as Missouri School of Mines and Metallurgy. The history between the city of Rolla and Missouri S and T spans generations. I believe that the growth of Missouri S and T will significantly impact our local job growth and tax revenue in a good way. New jobs will be formed, and people will move here to work. And furthermore, we have some of the best and brightest people in the world coming to Rolla to gain an education. Um, however, we cannot seem to retain some of them and keep them in the area. Um, I believe that State Representative Don Mayhew is currently working on a bill to help retain some of the people in the area, so we can continue to start and grow new businesses. And that is what I'm trying to help focus on, is creating job growth within the area.
Thank you. Our third topic tonight is ARPA funding. The city of Rolla has received significant federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, with more coming this year. How will you advocate this ARPA funding be used? Josh, one minute to you.
If I'm not mistaken, the city of Rolla has already voted on distributing round one of the ARPA funds. I believe that would leave us with about one point three million dollars left. Um, I feel that our local government should be using the ARPA funds for windfall scenarios. For instance, um, under Model Two of the Ten Year Sustainability General Fund, uh, from the workshop on January third, the city's wanting to purchase a fire truck. It costs somewhere in the ballpark of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, financed over ten years. What I would like to see is for the city to use the ARPA funds to completely buy the entire fire truck, um, at once, so that way we're not wasting taxpayer dollars on interest. Again, it's just dealing with windfall scenarios, so that way we can better use our tax dollars in the future.
Thank you. Terry, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, one minute to you.
Well, these are one-time funds that need to be spent on the betterment of our community. We don't wanna look back in ten years and have nothing to show from this funding. A lot of brainstorming and common sense conversations are needed to address this very serious topic. We have to make sure these funds are allocated properly.
Thank you. Alrighty, with our fourth topic tonight, I'm gonna turn things back over to RD.
Our fourth topic is Rolla's homeless population. Homelessness remains a top concern of citizens, with the Rolla mission often being centered to discussions. What are your thoughts on this issue, and how will you approach it in office?
Terry, one minute to you.
Thank you. First of all, homelessness and the issues connected to it is complex. It's a concern that I believe requires open, honest, and informative conversations from many factions in the community. Until we do that, our community doesn't have a chance at improving the situation. As a community, we are all witnessing the results of homelessness in one way or another, and it's highly emotional subject. Remembering that the homeless are human beings with varying backgrounds and needs would be a good first step. Also acknowledging that our community does not have unlimited resources.
Thank you. Josh, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
RD?
Our fourth topic is Rolla's homeless population. Homelessness remains a top concern of citizens, with the Rolla mission often being centered to discussions. What are your thoughts on this issue? How will you approach it in office?
Homelessness is a major concern, and it is heartbreaking to see. We see it a lot, uh, here recently, over the last couple of years. You know, I was recently at a city council meeting where many business owners expressed concern about the possible movement of the Rolla mission, and I one hundred percent understand their concerns. I also understand that there are people that need help. So, if I were elected to city council, I would call on my fellow council members to create a committee to research, um, local, county, state, and federal resources and programs to possibly help assist low-income or no-income and other at-risk demographics. Outside of that, without being directly involved. I believe that's the best answer I've got.
Alright, thank you. We're now gonna move on to our reader questions. These questions are submitted to our readers after we made a post to Facebook. Our first reader question is, "There's a lot of talk of downtown changes, such as switching driving directions on some roads, and maybe a new fountain. What are your thoughts on all of this?" And, uh, Josh, I believe that you're up, one minute to you.
So, my thoughts on changing the driving direction for downtown, uh, I've been here for twenty-one years, and I don't know anything different. So, if it does happen, which it would be a... it would be different, uh, to say the least. I know that it has been that in the past. As for the fountain, um, in my personal opinion, I think where we're put... where they want to put the fountain is kind of hidden, tucked back in a corner. I don't believe that it should be there. And I do believe that at, on some level, we are in the future going to be wasting taxpayer dollars for the upkeep of a fountain that currently, a lot of people that I've talked to are concerned about it being used inappropriately, by other members of our community, so...
Thank you. Terry, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, one minute to you.
So, changing the downtown. I'm a little concerned about changing the direction of the driving, just because, uh, some people try to drive both ways as well right now, and it doesn't work very well. So, I think studying how will that affect the businesses? Will it really help? Will it help the flow of our downtown? What will change in the parking? Something might have to change in the parking. Um, I would just like to see what the studies are on that and what the plan is. Um, I'm never opposed to improving the downtown. As far as the fountain goes, um, because of the MOU, I felt okay saying okay, uh, because they have to raise a substantial amount of money before the city even does anything. Um, I think the location could be better. I really don't like where they planned it, um, and is it the right time?
Thank you. For our next reader question, I'm gonna take... turn things over to RD.
Please state any of your conflicts of interest, and describe how they may impact your work on the city council.
Terry, one minute to you.
Conflicts of interest, I'm not sure I really have any. Um, I would say that when I try and make a decision, no matter what my personal thoughts are on it, I'm representing the people in my ward and my community, and I'll take what their thoughts and responses are, um, and talk with them about it, and just see what seems to be the most reasonable, uh, way to vote. I try to take that all in, but if I have a really gut feeling or a moral issue, I'm, I'm gonna have to go with common sense or what I feel is right.
Thank you. Josh, would you like RD to repeat the question?
That's fine.
Alright, one minute to you.
I do not have any conflicts of interest that I'm aware of. Uh, I work for a company that doesn't have any dealings with the city. But if I am elected to council, um, you know, I do plan on going out there and continuing what has been started, walking around and talking to the constituents on, uh, tough topic, key, key topics for the city to get what they feel, gain a consensus, and, um, and, and work with the community. That's what I got.
Thank you. Alright. Uh, to conclude, we're gonna... going to now each give you two minutes to follow up from any previous questions or to bring up another issue that you'd like to be heard. Uh, once again, you'll have two minutes for your closing statement, and Josh, I believe you will go first. Two minutes to you.
So, in my personal opinion, um, I believe that government needs to be reinstated back to where it was originally created. And that is run by the people. Um, there are some things that are going on in our community right now that people can't do what they wish with the property that they own. And I believe that the city of Rolla should be there to basically ensure that their relationship with non-government organizations is that they're there to secure the rights of the people, businesses, and organizations to operate peacefully within the boundaries of all laws and ordinances that are in place. Um, another thing that I wanna touch on real quick, and I gotta get this out, is three years ago in the city council meeting, I did bring up the fire department in response to the use tax. This has been a question that has been asked while I've been out campaigning. Three years ago, I was just getting involved with the city. Um, you know, when we had seventy people come out and vote in one ward out of three thousand people, you know, I, I was getting tired of being that person that just was sitting behind the scenes. And I wanted to do good for the community that I grew up in and that I live in. So, when it was time for the use tax, you know, not understanding the intricacies of city government, it did seem as if I was coming after the fire department, and I want to ensure those that are watching that over three years, my thought processes have changed. I've grown, and I've learned a lot. But thank you guys.
Terry, two minutes to you.
Thank you. Um, I really feel like being on the city council for the two years has been very enlightening for me. Um, it's, it's really hard to get a sense of the intricacies of the way the city government works, uh, being a part of it. Um, I feel like I've just got my footing on being a council member and building that good communication with residents, understanding and weighing the issues and the potential impact of my vote. So, I really would like to con... continue just because it takes a long time to learn a lot of the things, and, uh, we're just in the middle of so many important issues. And, uh, I feel like it might be advantageous for me to continue just because I've got some background and some history with it. Uh, but it was all learned on the fly, so... There you go.
Thank you both. Uh, thank you once again for participating tonight. We will now be moving on to our Ward Three candidates. Thank you.
I thought it was on both sides.
Oh, it's alright.
Oh, is it just?
Hi, this is... this is just me, you want me?
Yeah, yeah.
Center of attention.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Lister is one of two unopposed candidates in this election. Lister, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
You will now have thirty seconds to introduce yourself, and please tell us why you're running for city council.
Absolutely, I came here to go to school at the University in nineteen eighty-seven, yes, eighty-seven. I got married here, I've raised my children here. This is where I graduated from. This is my hometown, I call... I consider it now. Um, Rolla's done a lot for me. I've matured here, I've, I've... I've come from a boy who was released from a country town to I consider myself a full man now. So, um, Rolla's been blessed to me, and I would like to give back to my community that I love.
Thank you. Alright. Uh, Lister, once again, we're now gonna have six questions. The first four were selected by our news staff, and the final two were submitted by our readers. You'll have one minute to respond to each. Our first quest topic tonight is economic development. "In recent years, Rolla has seen many large commercial developments come to town and new businesses open. However, other smaller businesses have struggled and closed. What policies or efforts should be used to support local businesses and continue Rolla's overall economic growth?"
When we're talking about the business, there's so many different sectors that affect them and the decision-making of why they're staying and why they're going. Um, some of the great things about this is that, um, our schools, our educational, our, um, our workforce is pretty strong here. Taxes, um, the cost of living and the standard of living in our community. So, it's kinda hard to pinpoint one answer to go across that, but I think that you have to take into consideration all these different metrics. You have to get out there and survey, you've gotta be a part, you've gotta be a head of this, you've gotta see the trends that are coming in. It's a lot of legwork, but you gotta be involved, you gotta be engaged, and you gotta, you gotta emphasize that this, that this is a community that's inviting. We want you to come here. I think we do that very well. I think our Chamber of Commerce does that really well. And so, um, I'm looking forward to seeking, reaping the benefits of being an outstanding community.
Alright, thank you. For our next question, I'm gonna turn it over to RD.
Councilman, our second topic is university expansion. Missouri S and T has announced the North Star goal of growing its enrollment to twelve thousand students by twenty thirty. Do you feel the campus's growth is good or bad for Rolla? And how will you work with Missouri S and T on this issue?
Yes, absolutely. Standalone is a good thing, but as we all know, the eyes and the details. The particular how we enforce it, in particular how it comes across, in particular how fast we grow that. And we've gotta make sure the interest structure is in place in order for us to be grow in a comfortable manner. So, yes, I think it's an overall thing, and I think that we have to coordinate. I think that the university's done a really good job of keeping us involved in the loop, and we have to continue those processes. We have to make sure that we're shaking hands, we're in agreement of how we're gonna approach this thing together. That's gonna be a significant jump. I think that the community of Rolla can handle this. I think that it's gonna be good for us. I think it's gonna be good for, um, the businesses that we were speaking about earlier, coming in and looking inviting for our community. It shows that we're looking forward. We always wanna appreciate where we've been, but we are looking forward, so... And overall, I think it's a good thing, but we're keeping our eye on how we're gonna get that thing done, how we're gonna get it accomplished.
Thank you. Lister, our third topic tonight is ARPA funding. "The city of Rolla has received significant federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, with more coming this year. How will you advocate this ARPA money be used?"
I think one of the things that we really wanted to stress out, we wanted to make sure that we were able to assist the people who, um, have been highly impacted by, um, the COVID, um, um, pandemic that happened in our community and worldwide. So, we definitely wanted to give money back to the first responders. We wanted to reimburse maybe lost wages, but we wanna look beyond just that, too. We wanna look at the businesses, we wanna look at some, some of the things in our community that have been impacted. So, we've used some of the funding right now, and we're still doing studies on that to, to, to figure out what are the other ways we can use it. So, um, we definitely wanna use it in our community to, to, to move it forward and address some of the shortcomings that we have. And I think that we're trying to do that right now. We're continuing to do that, and, um, excited about what we're gonna get done with it.
Thank you. Alright, for our fourth topic, I'm gonna turn it back over to RD.
Our fourth topic is Rolla's homeless population, councilman. Help... homelessness remains a top concern of citizens, with the Rolla mission often being centered to those discussions. What are your thoughts on this issue, and how will you approach it in office?
I think that the mission is a telltale sign of who we are as a community. We care. We're, we're a majority Christian-based community, and we wanna look out for our fellow brothers and fellow sisters in our community and those who are downtrodden, and that's a beautiful thing. I think what we have to address, though, is how we're gonna get it done. And I think that one of the things that we're working on right now, and I'm part on those committees, is we wanna figure out what are the regulations that we can put in place. We need to establish what are the rules, and how do we get it done, and how is it gonna be governed? So, so we can all understand what are the... what's the playing field? We can all understand how do we get it accomplished? And when we establish those things, we can get input from our citizens, so we can make sure that it addresses and it's built and it's maintained in a way that we think is right for our community.
Thank you. Alright, Lister will now move on to our two reader submitted questions. Our first one is this. "There's a lot of talk of downtown changes, such as switching driving directions on some roads, and maybe a new fountain. What are your thoughts on all this?" One minute.
The only thing that's constant in life is change. So, there's no problem with changes being proposed. We again have to study this and figure out the impact. When there's proposed these changes, they got some great ideals of the reason why they wanna get it done. You know, you wanna increase the traffic flow, you wanna increase the tr... increase the parking, you wanna increase, increase people being able to get downtown, move around, functionality, you know, you... when you're having, um, um, trucks that are delivering things to the business or some complication with them being able to get in and out. So, those are good things. Again, we have to take into consideration, we have to sit down there with our constituents and figure out, is this the future that we wanna go in? So, have no problem with it being proposed. Let's sit down and figure out where it is in the details and see how it's gonna work out.
Alright, thank you. For our second reader submitted question, I'm gonna turn it over to RD.
Councilman, a reader wants to know, please state any of your conflicts of interest, Councilman, a reader wants to know, would please state any of your conflicts of interest and describe how they may impact your work on the city council?
Yes, I don't think there's any outstanding conflict of interest, but, um, I've stated this before when we had some real controversial things that were coming up and and that, first of all, um, I, I'm a man of faith. And so I want to represent my ward and the community to the best ability. There will be times I think that I would try to do some things and maybe half the community or someone will not. The only times I really would go outside of that is if my faith calls me to do something outside of what the general population, I don't see that really happening in the Great War Three that I represent. But I always put that out there when I'm campaigning, letting people know that that is one of my core things. Also my moral compass. If it's outside my scope of my moral compass, which I, I think that's when then I will have a conflict. And, um, if I have information as a city councilman member that's not related to the public, I would hope that you would grant me some, um, leeway and understanding that I made that decision based off that information that I was not able to share at that time.
Thank you, sir. We will now give you two minutes. You may, uh, revisit a previous quest, previous question, bring up another topic and make a closing statement.
Citizens of Rolla, Missouri, and beyond, we, we love our, our town. And I don't know, too many people living in this community don't really love our community. And so one of the things I've been stressing, I'm still going to stress, is that the answers have to come from the bottom up. It comes from us being engaged. It comes from you contacting us. It comes from you being engaged in, um, the local government. And so one of the things we're doing in our ward and a lot of other wards, that we're doing things like, um, block parties. Um, um, what's the other thing? We're doing block parties. We're doing community, um, outreach and we're doing, um, commu- neighborhood watches. Absolutely. So I want you to be on the lookout for that. I want you to be engaged in the community. Same way you're, we're engaged when it comes to sports and and celebrations and different things around our community. We need to be engaged with our neighbors. We need to know our community back and forth. Instead of closing our blinds and not knowing who the people are around us, let's get out and meet one another and make this, let's continue the upward trend of this community coming together and this community becoming better and better and better. One of the best countries, one, one of the best towns, one of the best cities that I've ever lived in and been a company, I've been around. So we can do it together, citizens, and let's do it together.
All right, thank you for your participation tonight, sir. For the folks at home, we're now moving on to our Ward Four candidates.
It's water. It's water.
Thank you both for coming tonight. We're going to begin with opening statements. You will each have thirty seconds to introduce yourself and please tell us why you are running for city council. Jared, we'll begin with you.
My name is Jared Hall. I am living in Ward Four with my wife and six children. We moved to Rolla in the fall of two thousand seventeen. I was born and raised in Missouri. I went to UMR for my undergraduate degree. I got a law degree back in two thousand eight and I've been practicing law basically in this area ever since. And, um, I'm running for Ward Four because I am, my focus on government is limited government and personal liberties. And I think that there's a lot of shared values in my Ward Four, those issues.
Thank you. Jody, thirty seconds to you.
Hi, my name's Jody Everly and I've been the Ward Four councilperson for the last four years. Uh, I am married and we've lived in Rolla for twenty-one years. My son went through the Rolla Public Schools and is currently grown and out of the house. I am also retired from the United States Forest Service, had a thirty-eight-year career with them. Uh, I'm running because I think it's important for the city council to have a mix of, uh, experienced folks and new folks. And we have a lot of new folks on the council, so.
Thank you. All right, we're now going to move on to six questions. The first four were compiled by our newsroom staff and the final two were submitted from our readers. You'll have one minute to answer each question. Our first topic tonight is economic development. In recent years, Rolla has seen many large, many new large commercial developments come to town and businesses open. However, other smaller businesses have struggled and closed. What policies or efforts should be used to support local businesses and continue Rolla's overall economic growth? Jody, one minute to you.
So I'm not a business owner, so, uh, I think the best way to support our local businesses is to actually listen to what they have to say about what, what their ideas are for improving the business atmosphere in Rolla. Um, I think maintaining a strong relationship between the city and our, uh, Chamber of Commerce and the Rolla Downtown Business Association uh, is a priority. Uh, I think we should support our local businesses by helping them with the festivals and other events that we have downtown. Uh, and I also think that, uh, simply making Rolla, uh, an even better place for people to live uh, is a good way to attract businesses. If people want to live in Rolla, businesses will want to do business here.
Thank you. Jared, one minute. Oh, would you like me to repeat the question?
Uh, no, thank you. That's fine. I think that Ms. Everly made a lot of good points. Uh, the role of government is not to obviously pick winners and losers in businesses. Um, I think that it's nice to have a good mix of large businesses as well as small ones. Unfortunately, running a business means that sometimes it's not going to work out. However, we want policies that are conducive to people being able to run their businesses well. So for instance, I would be interested in looking at, um, what our local businesses think may be obstacles to them thriving. And if those are obstacles that we shouldn't have there, we should try to remove those. Um, we do need to try to address things like, um, the perceived safety of our city, um, which ties into the homelessness issue. Uh, because people want to do business in places where they feel safe. Um, so I think that the government should do its job of keeping the roads good, the roads safe, um, and just the basic things that the city government should be working on, uh, to make sure that the entrepreneurs and the small business owners can thrive in that environment.
Thank you. For our second topic, I'm going to turn things over to RD.
Our second topic is university expansion. Missouri S and T has announced the North Star goal of growing its enrollment to twelve thousand students by twenty thirty. Do you feel the campus's growth is good or bad for Rolla? How will you work with Missouri S and T on this issue?
Jared, one minute to you.
Yes, thank you. So I graduated from, uh, Rolla, uh, UMR S and T now back in two thousand eight. I had a great experience there. Um, I think it's actually, to answer your question directly, it's very good for the city, I think. Um, not only does it allow our local students a really good place to go to college, but it actually specializes in things that there's a really great market for, science and technology issues. I think that's fantastic. Um, one of the things that I think maybe we as a city government can do is have people working with, uh, university people, uh, maybe talk about some kind of a scholarship that local businesses can work on. Um, to try to see if there's ways to foster an interest of students graduating to stick around in the area. Because that's one of the things, I mean, we're creating extremely well-educated people who then go out other places. It'd be nice if more of the talent would actually stick around. I don't know how we make that happen, but I think it would be really good for Rolla for that to happen.
Thank you. Jody, one minute to you.
Okay, so I, I think the expansion of, uh, Missouri S and T has both pros and cons for the city of Rolla. On the plus side, of course, more students means and more staff means that there'll be economic growth. Uh, you can have needs for more housing, additional, uh, entertainment arenas, additional technology needs and more spending at local businesses. However, with the more people also comes the need for more infrastructure and more expenditures by the city to make sure that those people are taken care of with city services. So obviously that adds to the cost of operating the city. So I think that the, probably the most important thing as S and T, uh, expands is that the, the city and the university staff, uh, the mayor and the chancellor have real clear and consistent lines of communication between them so that they can maximize the benefits of expansion, uh, and minimize the conflicts that might occur.
Thank you. Our third topic tonight is ARPA funding. The city of Rolla has received significant federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act with more coming this year. How will you advocate this ARPA money be used? Jody, one minute.
So ARPA funds are intended to help cities relieve some of the financial stresses, uh, that were caused by the COVID pandemic. They're, uh, basically a one-time input, so we've got to recognize that they're a short-term stopgap solution to some financial issues that are related to the impacts of COVID. Um, they won't alleviate some of the long-term funding issues that we've got in the city and they'll not be available in future years to, to take care of, uh, recurring expenses. So that sort of limits what we might be able to do with them. There are a variety of appropriate places that we probably could use these funds and I am keeping my options open to see what the mayor and the city staff come up with, uh, as options, uh, I'll carefully consider all of those and lean towards making sure that our people are taken care of, uh, as we look at how to spend those funds.
Thank you. Jared, would you like me to repeat the question?
Uh, no, thank you.
One minute to you.
As I understand it, this ARPA money is to help the city deal with, uh, shortfalls in funding that may have occurred because of the COVID pandemic. And so I would not be in favor of spending this money on grand projects that we wouldn't otherwise have been thinking of. We need to figure out where are our shortfalls, because I believe that we have not brought in as much money recently, as much revenue recently as we anticipated. And yet we're also getting this money from the federal government that we weren't anticipating. And I think that money should go towards covering those shortfalls as directly as possible, uh, as opposed to trying to, um, do anything outside of what we already would have been thinking of doing. Um, again, it's going to take some careful research to decide exactly where that funding needs to go. But I think that there are areas such as, uh, funding the police department with some projects that I think that they already expected to have been able to be completed, such as, uh, body cameras. Maybe we can fund some of those projects with this money.
Thank you. For our fourth topic, I'm going to turn it over to RD.
Our fourth topic is Rolla's homeless population. Homelessness remains a top concern of citizens with the Rolla mission often being centered to discussions. What are your thoughts on this issue? How will you approach it in office?
Jared, one minute to you.
So as I see it, this is one of the most complex issues that we face today and we're talking about it for a minute. So, uh, a minute's worth of thoughts on the topic. Um, what was interesting is we recently had a city council meeting where a lot of business owners came and talked about the proposed move of the mission. Um, the mission was trying to use an interesting, uh, quasi judicial is the fancy word for that process to get a, uh, permit to move where they're currently located. Um, after the pretty loud outcry against what they were proposing, um, one thing that came to my mind was the people at the mission aren't happy about the negative views of some of Rolla people uh, against the mission. I don't, there's nothing about what the mission is doing that they're doing on purpose to try to make these problems. And so they, I, I think that they are responsive to, uh, the concerns that the city has. And so I think that if we work with the mission voluntarily, as opposed to trying to put in rules and regulations to restrict charity, which is something I don't want to do, um, I think that we need to try to work with them and come up with mutual solutions.
Jody, would you like me to repeat the question?
Nope, got it. So homelessness is not an issue that's unique to Rolla. Every town in the country has people who are unhoused and even large cities with a lot more resources than we have, uh, are struggling to try to understand and, and figure out solutions to, to what to do about it. Um, addressing this issue is going to take more than just the city of Rolla. It's going to take some substantial changes in some of our nation's social systems to make a dent. Um, the mission is one of the number of charitable organizations in our town that's, uh, attempting to, to make a dent in that. Uh, they try to help people that have little or no support systems. And so their, their mission basically is to do this one person at a time and help connect those people with the services they need to get out of the situation that they're in. So as a city councilperson, I will continue to advocate for the mission. I'm going to help, try to help them find a location, uh, suitable for their purposes, away from downtown and tolerable to the community at large.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to our reader submitted questions. Our first question is this. I'm sorry. Oh, there it is. There's a lot of talk of downtown changes such as switching driving directions on some roads and maybe a new fountain. What are your thoughts on all of this? Jody, one minute.
So, uh, there have been a couple of, uh, public meetings, uh, over the past several months, uh, about the, the potential changes in traffic and I went to one of them and uh, so I, I think Lister said it well, that change is, is always going to happen. I think the important thing about this kind of change is that we probably need to do a little bit better job of making sure that the entire community is involved and is giving input. So as far as the fountain goes, uh, the, the location for that is, is a historical location where there used to be a fountain. And I'd say, uh, if that's what the downtown folks are interested in and they're willing to, to put up the money and the, the effort for it, uh, then, uh, I don't have any issue with that.
Thank you. Jared, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. That's fine.
One minute to you.
All right. Um, you know, I think everybody's kind of acknowledged that change is going to happen. The question is, uh, whether it makes sense to do it. It's easy for me to spout an opinion, um, about traffic based on my own experience, but there's a lot of research on it that would determine what would be safe and what wouldn't be safe. I drive on Pine Street one way on my way to work and on Rolla Street home every day. And I tend more and more times somebody's turning into Rolla the wrong way at the same time that I'm trying to leave Rolla Street. And so it would be kind of, I'm sure I would be one of the people going the wrong way if we switched those roads. Um, so I don't know. It'd be weird. As far as the fountain, I, I was a history major. I really, I understand completely why some people want to put it in the location they're proposing. I like the historic connection. Uh, what I don't like is the taxation connection. I'd like to know if Rolla is going to be spending tax money that we already have a hard time getting enough of. Um, I don't want to see taxes raised. So if we can find a way for community or business funding, then I would be in favor of that.
Thank you. For our second reader question, I'm going to turn things over to RD.
A reader has asked that you please state any of your conflicts of interest and describe how they may impact your work on the city council.
Jody, one minute to you.
So I was thinking about this, uh, as we were listening to the others and I was thinking I didn't have any conflicts of interest, uh, that I'm aware of. But then as I thought about it a little, little further, um, I volunteer at the mission. Uh, I cook breakfast on Tuesday mornings over at the mission. And so I have a little bit different perspective of what's going on down there than some of the things that I've heard, uh, other people talking about. I don't know if that's a conflict of interest. Um, I do know that the people at the mission uh, are the heart and soul of what's happening there and I am very lucky and happy that we have such compassionate, caring people in our community. Um, but if someone thinks that that's a conflict of interest, then I'm disclosing that right now.
Thank you. Jared, one minute to you.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, especially, um, as an attorney, I have very definite conflict of interest rules that I have to apply. So I'll talk about those for a second. Um, a few months ago, maybe a year or so ago, our local Judge Crump decided to start appointing me, uh, to represent, uh, defendants in municipal city cases. Um, I do primarily family law, so this is an infinitesimally small portion of my practice. Um, but when I decided to run for, uh, city council, he has not appointed me to any more of those cases. Um, I do get paid by the city for those representations, usually somewhere between a hundred to five hundred dollars per case, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, I went up to him the other day with, when we had court and just said, hey, Judge, I'm sure you saw I was running for city council. Uh, don't appoint me to any more cases. So the couple of cases I still have are wrapping up. Um, I just think it's important to be very transparent about any potential philosophical conflicts of interest like what Ms. Everly mentioned. Um, if something that I'm doing, such as a charitable, uh, thing relates to the city, then I would also make that very clear to the city.
Thank you. All right, uh, we're now going to move to our closing statements. To conclude, each of you will have two minutes to follow up from any previous questions or bring up another issue you would like to be heard. Jared, two minutes to you.
Yeah, I wanted to, I don't feel like I finished my conflict of interest statement. Um, my goal is to wrap up the last couple of cases that I have opened with, uh, local defendants. I do not think that it would be appropriate for me to represent a defendant in court while being on city council. Um, that should not be a problem. Um, I am, as I said in my opening, my focus is on limited government and individual liberties. Um, I want to be a voice for those principles on the city council. Um, I sat in on a recent meeting where we discussed a lot of funding issues and a lot of different options for raising various taxes. I appreciate the dilemmas that Rolla has, uh, for paying for its various obligations, but I think we need to figure out a way to uh, just make sure that we're focused on the few things that we really need to be doing well, such as our police force and our firemen and our, uh, road upkeep and some of those things. But we need to be very cautious about projects beyond that. Um, because I do not want to see the sales tax raised. I do not want to see taxes raised at all in any, in any way if I can help it. I do not want to see taxes raised at all in any, in any way if I can help it. And so I will be bringing that to the table. I want to be a voice for personal responsibility, voluntary action, working closely and voluntarily with all the various businesses and charities and having, just, just focusing again on the protection of individual liberties, the criminal justice system, and things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Jody, two minutes to you.
So I guess I'd just like to say that four years on the city council doesn't seem like a very long time. But in some ways, it seems like a very long time. There've been a lot of things that have come up during the last four years that we've had to deal with and struggle with. And one of the things that has been most gratifying in those four years is just getting out and talking with the constituents of Ward Four and learning what their personal issues are and trying to help them navigate the ins and outs of city government and how to get things done and who to talk to and, and that sort of thing. So I, I, I do think that I would like to have another term on the city council in order to kind of continue the work that I've done, not only with the individuals in the ward, but also with some of the issues that are ongoing. And I think the historical knowledge and, and the understanding of the way that the issues have developed is important in understanding what the options are for solutions that are good for the citizens of Rala and the, the city as a whole. So.
Thank you. Thank you both for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the folks at home, we're going to be moving on to our Ward Two candidates. Thank you both for coming tonight. We're going to begin with opening statements. You'll have 30 seconds. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running for city council. Zachary, we'll begin with you. You have 30 seconds.
Hi, I'm Zachary Arnfield, and I'm running for office because I'm committed to serving the Rala community. I first moved to Rala in 2012, and I've spent most of that time in this community trying to build relationships, attachments and ties to the area. I am currently working as a public defender, Missouri Public Defender. I have also worked as a prosecutor in Jefferson County, Missouri, and also for a year in Anchorage, Alaska.
All right, thank you. Nathan, 30 seconds to you.
I'm Nathan Churbin. I'm, I was born and raised here in Rala, Missouri. I'm a third-generation Rala resident, third-generation small business owner. I've been married for 13 years to my wife Julie. Our family's been in the community since the 1950s, when my grandparents Clyde and Pat Vessel moved in here. My mom Peggy, she's owned vessels since 1980. And so I just want to be here. I want to continue to see good things and be a positive influence for Rala as we make decisions to move forward.
Thank you. We're now going to cover six questions. The first four were compiled by our newsroom staff, and the final two were submitted from the public. You'll have one minute to respond to each question. Our first topic tonight is economic development. In recent years, Rala has seen many large commercial developments come to town and new businesses open. However, other smaller businesses have struggled and closed. What policies or efforts should be used to support local businesses and continue Rala's overall economic growth? Nathan, one minute to you.
So for me, supporting local small business has to start with each individual in each individual home. But that becomes a priority to us to support those businesses. Coming from a lineage of small business owners, that's always been a priority to me, to our family, and so that, that has to start there. We have to encourage, continue to encourage growth and avoid unnecessary burden on the businesses. For me, one of the biggest things is avoiding exorbitant taxation on those businesses. For any small business owner, high taxation is, is a, is a, is a big burden for them. And so we, we don't want to place any unnecessary burdens on those. So we want to make sure to have policies that would encourage new development, but also we want to make sure not place burden on, on the businesses that are already existing.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the questions, Zach?
I think I've got it. And I'm going to start by agreeing with Nathan. I think the first step is shopping local.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's something any individual can do. As far as what the city council goes, I think that we do need to look at, because I've seen in the last 10 years, particularly in the downtown area, businesses struggling to stay open. Some of that is because of government reaction to COVID and whatnot, but I think that it's been a persistent issue. So I think that when you look at incentives for businesses and need to avoid any unnecessary regulations and burdens being placed on those, on those businesses. I think that also on top of that, any small business depends upon the consumers. So taxes generally, even if they're not business taxes, taxes on the individual are also something we need to avoid for the sake of those businesses.
Thank you. For our second topic, I'm going to turn it over to RD.
Our second topic is university expansion. Missouri S and T has announced the North Star goal of growing its enrollment to 12,000 students by 2030. Do you feel the campus's growth is good or bad for Rala? How will you work with Missouri S and T on this issue?
Zach, one minute to you.
In general, expansion of S and T is a good thing. It brings in more jobs, more people, and more spending. These are generally good. Now, of course, obviously, anytime you expand a population, you also expand expenses for that population as well, for that, for that community. So as long as we are working with and keeping open lines of communication with the administration, with their officials, and working to anticipate the needs of that expansion, I think that whatever drawbacks are minimal compared to the benefits of expanding that, that population of those, those students, of those professors, of the support staff of the university, and the additional spending and population that brings in.
Thank you. Nathan, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, all right, thank you.
All right, one minute to you.
So I see the university being very vital to our community. You know, it's necessary to have the city and university working together on this. They, they serve as an economic engine for the community. But a lot of businesses do, and that's important to remember. Brewer Science, Mosai, Phelps Health, Mercy, they generate jobs, they generate revenue, and this is very important to our community. One thing, when I was talking to a, a member of the board with the university, is that the growth scale that they were mentioning, the 12,000, that, that, they're believing that to be about 10,000 in-seat and a couple thousand online from what he was voicing. So that's one thing that, as far as the growth goes, we're more dealing with 10,000 in-seat students. There are some inherent issues as, as the growth, as it gets bigger. We have to make sure we have the infrastructure for that. We have to make sure that the growth that they have is also keeping in mind the good of Rala and the community here, not just the good of the university. So we have to be hand in hand and walk together for the long-term plan there.
Thank you. Our third topic tonight is ARPA funding. The city of Rala has received significant federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, with more coming this year. How would you advocate this ARPA money be used? Nathan, one minute to you.
So one thing to understand with, with ARPA funding is that there's limitations of what it can be used for. One of those is you can't use it on things like outstanding debt, which is something that I would be a fan of, of paying off debt, but it actually can't be used for that. So for me, it becomes, even with my own home budget, it becomes a prioritization. When you have extra funds, what do we do with this? So for me, your prioritization is going to be your, your, your police, your fire, and your infrastructure of maintaining streets, being sure that they're fully equipped and that they have everything that's necessary. When I talked with Police Chief Fagan, he mentioned the body cameras being an ongoing need that they would have. I, I spoke with Police Chief Ron Smith about there being a need for more dispatch employees, and whether that be specifically for ARPA funding used for that or not. It's necessary that we support these, these vital pieces of, of our community. So we, we need to make sure that what these funds do is set us up strongly for our future and that Rala is in a strong position as we move forward, not just in the moment.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it.
One minute to you.
So in, in general, I can't speak to the specific items that I think that we should be spending the ARPA funding on without taking a deeper dive into the specific budgetary needs, particularly the shortfalls that it's supposed to address. But I do think that the first priority should be meeting those shortfalls that are a result of not taking in as much due to COVID. Past that, I do think that we should be looking at spending on foundational things that are infrastructure-related, because I, my understanding is even though there are some restrictions on what it can be spent on, such as debt, as, as Nathan rightly mentions, but I think there have been some lifting of restrictions on, on the infrastructure aspects and being able to invest in that. And I think that that should be something we should be looking at as well, so that it will pay dividends much farther into the future without having additional expenses that we're building into a budget.
Thank you. For our fourth topic, I'm going to turn it over to RD.
Our fourth topic is Rala's homeless population. Homelessness remains a top concern of citizens with the Rala mission often being at the center of those discussions. What are your thoughts on this issue and how will you approach it in office?
Zachary, one minute to you.
So I believe that the people of Rala, in my experience, are caring, they're compassionate, and they want to help those who are in need. And I think that I've seen the people of Rala continue to help meet those needs through their churches, through private charities, through places like the mission. Now that said, there is unfortunately unintended consequences to anytime you have an area where there is an increasing amount of homelessness. And so I think that with those collateral issues that arise from those increases, we need to work, the city's council needs to work closely with both the mission and with law enforcement to help address those needs as they arise.
Thank you. Would you like us to repeat the question?
No, that's right.
One minute to you.
So there's been a feeling of this getting worse over the past few years, and there's concern for personal safety, and that's becoming a, a rising issue. You know, we never want to lose our heart of compassion, our heart of sympathy for those that are truly in need. We, we want to take care of those that were native to Rala, native to this community, that we take care of them when they fall in hard times, but not turning Rala into a dumping ground for, for other people to blame, to bring them here. I would want to work alongside with those that have, that are dealing with this most. On one hand, you'd be dealing with your local charities. Organizations like the Salvation Army have been here, they have a very good reputation in Rala. But on the other side, you're dealing with working alongside with your police and your prosecuting attorney to make sure that when a person chooses a life of lawlessness, then that, that's not going to be supported in our community. I am a fan of, of city codes. That, that has been brought up by city council already to bring clarity to how these, how they can function. All businesses have codes. I think it's necessary for the, the shelters as well to have that. It's, it's very important. You, you represent a lot of downtown businesses, and, and that's, and that's key. The, the switching the road direction is a fairly new point to me. So I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of a lot of that. There's a lot of studies that has to go into this. I was born and raised here. Anytime change comes, you're like, oh, I'm so going to drive up the road the wrong direction if they change that. But there's a lot of studies that if it can help the productivity and help these businesses grow, I'm definitely a, a fan of, of considering these things. The fountain has gotten brought up, and I, I've gotten to talk with Ms. Sowers about this. She's with the downtown organization. You know, I, I want to be a, a fan of hers and take care of that, but also not create a potential issue with people using the fountain for unnecessary or unattended uses. So I think, you know, lots of study, lots of thought with, with how we do it, but also take care of the downtown organization and, and those businesses as we do.
Thank you. Nate, Zachary, would you like me to repeat the question?
No. I don't think that anybody wants to rule out anything that could improve the businesses downtown. So I, again, this is, as Nathan says, a very new thing, the idea, or new to me at least, the idea of changing the directions of the roads. We can study it. I would not want to be closed to any idea like that, particularly if there's going to be some economic financial benefit for those businesses. That would be good, but it should be studied carefully before we invest in that. As for the fountain, I saw a picture of the old fountain. I think it's really interesting from a historical perspective. I'm not sure that we need to be spending money on that or burdening the city with any potential additional future expense at this time when we're already having some very serious budget issues that should be looked at, rather than adding additional things that, that would not have a direct financial or, or economic benefit for the commerce downtown.
Thank you. For our second reader question, I'm going to turn things over to RD.
From our reader, please state any of your conflicts of interest and describe how they may impact your work on the city council.
One minute to you.
To my knowledge, I do not have any conflicts of interest. I do not have any business interest in Rala. My office is here in Rala, the Missouri Public Defender's office is here, but all of my criminal defense work takes place in Crawford County. So I don't believe that I have any, any conflicts like that. If I were to be made aware of a conflict, I would have to approach that as I find out about it.
Thank you. Would you like us to repeat the question?
No.
One minute to you.
To my knowledge, I, I have no conflicts of interest, but as individuals, we always have scopes of life that we look through, our, our experiences. And this, this morphs how we look at life and how we consider it. Mr. Lister had mentioned his faith. I'm, I'm a faithful person as well. And I've mentioned being a small business owner. And so being a small business owner, you, you look at life a certain way and you contemplate how money should be handled a certain way. And that's the scope of which I, I look through this. So, so I, I don't see it as a conflict of interest, but it is a consideration, and it would affect the way that I consider things and how I look at them.
Thank you. We'll now move on to closing statements. You'll each have two minutes to follow up from a previous question or bring up a new issue. Two minutes to you, Nathan.
You know, I, I, I'm stepping into this. I'm wanting to, to listen and learn. I, I want to, to grow in this. My family's been a part of this community for a long time, but I want to be a, a, a more a part of it. I want to step into that. You know, I, I have, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a character-based person. I make decisions based off of those things. But I also want to have conversations with, with other people involved and hear what they have to say and grow. And so I'm, I'm not coming into this closed-minded that I, I have one way that I'm going to consider things. I think being open to conversation is something that we've lost in our country. I'm very willing to have those conversations, even if we don't innately agree with one another. For me, my, my interest began to peak a couple of years ago when we began losing certain liberties and freedoms for us to make decisions for ourselves. My own business was shut down for a month and, and considered non-essential. So it's something that I would not do upon others. I am one that I believe in, in educating yourself, having self-responsibility, that, that as we step into this, that, that it is upon us and for our decisions to, to thrive in our lives.
All right. Thank you. Zachary, two minutes to you.
I think that it is very important that if I were on the city council, I would approach this from a perspective of being a good steward of the people's money, of the tax dollars that are brought in, and to address the issues that we need to address in the budget, that we need to make sure that the money that we're taking in is going to the expenditures that we need to make, things like public safety, the police, the fire department, things like road maintenance. I believe Mr. Hall mentioned that. But I think that we need to, if at all possible, avoid additional increases in tax. I think that the use tax, all of that money should be going to public safety as, as it was presented to the people when they voted for it. I think that it may well be inevitable that additional taxes come at some point in the future, but I am opposed to that until we can go through the budget and see if there's anything that we could be privatizing, if it is a, if it is a, a drain on money, things that we don't need to be, because there are things that we should be spending money on that need to be getting our first priority before we consider raising taxes. So that is, that is the most important thing I'd like to say for what I believe the role of the city council should be.
All right. Thank you both for your participation tonight. For the folks at home, we will now be moving on to our Ward Six candidates. Thank you both for coming tonight. We will begin with opening statements. You both will have 30 seconds to introduce yourself, and please tell us why you are running for city council. Tina, we will begin with you.
Hi, I'm Tina Balch. I've lived in Rala Ward Six for 15 years. I have a husband, Jim, of 27 years, and four children, two adult children and two sons still at home. We relocated here to Rala from Massachusetts in 2007. And when we did, we felt like we moved to the heart of America. And I would like to run for city council to, I'm sorry, got distracted by your sign. I'd like to run for city council to be a positive person coming out of Ward Six in city council.
Thank you. Robert, 30 seconds to you.
Well, I'm, I'm Robert Miller. I've been living in Ward Six since 2015. I'm a former Missouri S and T student. I've been married to- I've been married to my wife for over seven and a half years. And I'm running for city council because I hope to be the change that Rala needs at this point, especially coming out, out of COVID and, uh, and to voice the, the citizens' concerns and needs and to make sure that those needs are met.
Thank you. We will now cover six questions. The first four were compiled by our newsroom staff and the final two were submitted from the public. You'll have one minute to respond to each question. Our first question, our first topic tonight is economic development. In recent years, Rala has seen many large commercial developments come to town and new businesses open. However, other smaller businesses have struggled and closed. What policies or efforts should be used to support local businesses and continue Rala's overall economic growth? Robert, one minute to you.
Well, I believe over the last couple of years, uh, we've had businesses close simply because of the COVID restrictions that were in place by our city government. But I believe that coming out of this pandemic, there's much more untapped potential. The potential of our community is great with our small businesses, but the one thing that we have to do is shop local and buy local. If we don't do that, it's just a hindrance for competition because we could have competitions from other communities and we cannot keep our tax dollars, you know, our tax revenue here in our community to let it grow and expand. And our city government should have the responsibility to have a relationship with our small businesses and small business owners. You know, we are a community that is welcoming and we should be thriving, especially at this point.
Thank you. Tina, would you like us to repeat the question?
No, thank you. Um, well, I, I would ask myself now, are there any policies used to support local businesses? I would think that the city of Rala should and would use every effort to shop local. Shopping local keeps the revenue flowing in our own community. Uh, we can make every effort personally as well, not just coming from the city standpoint, but for ourselves as well. Shopping local supports our local businesses. Other efforts could include not adding any more taxes or ta, more higher taxes on local businesses, no mandates on local businesses. And, um, possibly if there's a way, how might ARPA funds be used to support local businesses? Um, regarding, um, Rala is really the heart of America. Rala has a small-town feel with a wonderful community regarding new and, regarding the new and better jobs, um, being brought to the community. Um, there are things out there that they can look at. Missouri Works Program and sales tax exemptions for businesses that qualify.
All righty, for our second topic tonight, I'm going to turn things over to RD.
Our second topic is university expansion. Missouri S and T has announced the North Star goal of growing its enrollment to 12,000 students by 2030. Do you feel the campus's growth is good or bad for Rala? How will you work with Missouri S and T on this issue?
Tina, one minute to you.
Okay. One of the things our family loved about moving to Rala years ago is the small-town feel and the friendly community. We've been here for 15 years and the university has grown in that time. However, we still sense that mid-America, small-town community. Um, opinion on whether campus expansion is good or bad is really irrelevant because it is happening. We are experiencing that. Regardless, regardless of campus expansion, again, I would not want to see increased taxes on, um, local businesses or residents. Um, and also when the students come to Rala, it increases the flow of revenue in our city. And some of the events that the university hosts are all-time favorites and contribute to the connection with the Rala citizens, like St. Pat's Parade and Celebration of Nations. I see a lot of benefits regarding the, um, university.
Thank you. Robert, would you like us to repeat the question?
Uh, no.
One minute.
I believe that the university expansion is both good and bad. Uh, that some of the pros are, you know, we do have increased in tax revenue and increased students, you know, get the more, uh, STEM degrees out there, you know, for recruitment purposes. But also there is a few cons to this, especially for, uh, expansion itself could mean that, you know, this could be pushed on every citizen in this community, which could be burdensome by tag, by putting a tax burden on them. And also the number of students that do enroll at Missouri S and T with an increased burden on student loan debt. Uh, where you do have a $1.8 trillion student loan crisis right now affecting 45 million people. So I would work with the university in such a way to, if we could financially prepare our students to come to Rala to attend Missouri S and T without as much debt as they could accumulate, that would be what I would prioritize.
Thank you. Our third topic tonight is ARPA funding. The city of Rala has received significant federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act with more coming this year. How will you advocate this ARPA money to be used? Robert, one minute to you.
Well, the ARPA funding I would advocate for would be to invest in our small businesses because our small businesses were ravaged by the COVID-19 pandemic in many different ways, including the mandates, the restrictions and whatever else that we're throwing at, at them. And I am very surprised that some of these small businesses actually survived the pandemic. But the ARPA funding should be made available to those that have struggled and will be struggling for the near future. And if there are any remaining ARPA funds left over, we should be sending that back to the federal government because in a morality sense, it's not fair to us to hold borrowed money when we could be sending it back saying we don't need it. Why should we have it?
Thank you. Tina, would you like us to repeat the question?
No, thank you.
One minute.
Public safety is a key concern of mine. We need to equip our local law enforcement, fire and rescue to be the best of the city, at the cities, the best of the city's ability. I believe we need to provide the funding for the body cameras for our police officers. I believe we need to take care of our local law enforcement who are the front, on the front lines of serving the city as well as our fire and rescue. So public safety is the top, at the top of the list for me. Also, I, I think about behavioral health. Consider how we can support individuals with mental illness, developmental disabilities and substance use disorders. Look at fiscal recovery funds for behavioral health in our community.
Thank you. For our fourth topic tonight, I'm going to turn things over to RD.
Our fourth topic is Rala's homeless population. Homelessness remains a top concern of citizens with the Rala mission often being at the center of those discussions. What are your thoughts on this issue? How will you approach it in office?
Tina, one minute to you.
Thank you. I believe we live in a community that is compassionate. There are many ways to give in this community and there are many people who give so much to the different nonprofit organizations here in Rala. The Rala mission has helped people in need and the people who volunteer, they really care for the people that they are helping. However, with compassion comes accountability and compassion does not equal enabling. There are great concerns with the mission. Business owners, parents, neighbors, property owners have valid concerns and we have to hear them, we must hear them. We are all part of this community. I support the city council's decision to move forward with drafting an ordinance pertaining to homeless shelters because there isn't one here currently. The council acts through the adoption of ordinances, resolutions and motions in establishing all laws, policies and practices necessary to protect the health and safety and welfare of all of our citizens.
Thank you. Robert, would you like us to repeat the question?
Uh, no.
One minute to you.
Well, homelessness is a, a very serious issue. It's not just a Rala issue, but it's a nationwide issue. And, and combating the homeless issue, you know, we shouldn't be finding a way to be more proactive and not reactive to this issue. I did hear about the city council meeting that involves so many, uh, residents and business owners concerning the mission's move to, uh, the old Jordan Motors location. But in a sense, that's not going to help the issue. What we have to really focus on is meeting the, finding out what their, their needs are and finding out the truth and not just, well, they're, they're homeless, just a stereotypical solution to it. And being on city council, I will find a proactive approach to help these, these homeless, uh, people out and try to do what we can to get them the help they need and have closure in their life.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our two reader-submitted questions. Our first question is this. There's a lot of talk of downtown changes, such as switching driving directions on some roads and maybe a new fountain. What are your thoughts on all of this? Robert, one minute to you.
Well, my thought on the reconstruction of the downtown is we should be leaving a lot of that alone. Uh, you know, we've come to know in this for years that, you know, the, the traffic flow is, is good, the parking lot is fine, but it also, uh, kind of brings in the question of roundabouts in our community. You know, it gets into that mix a little bit. And, um, and the possibility of, of a fountain is, it's a waste of taxpayer money anyway. Uh, you can only use that fountain only about eight months out of the year. During the winter, you can't even run it. You know, there's so many maintenance upkeep issues that will occur with this fountain and, and we should not be wasting taxpayer money on this, this fountain anyway. And I believe that we should just keep the infrastructure the way it is. It's suited us for, for years. But, you know, just keep up the regular maintenance on what it needs to keep us going.
Thank you. Tina, would you like us to repeat the question?
No, thank you.
One minute to you.
Okay. Um, the first thing I thought of regarding the reconstruction of, of the, uh, downtown Rala was, uh, there's so much that they're already going to be getting used to with this, uh, changes that are happening right now that we're experiencing. So it'll be like a double whammy if that was to happen. But, um, again, I think change is inevitable. Uh, the people of Rala, uh, do love this community and is there is that, it's been this way forever. Um, you know, we, I think asking the constituents in our wards what they think about this, giving people a chance to have a voice about, about this. Um, one person already talked about, um, meetings, um, have already happened. And, you know, I think that that would be good to, that they have a voice to see what the concerns are regarding that. And regarding the fountain, I, I feel similar to Robert. Um, you know, I think we need to ask the constituents, is this a way that we want to see the city money spent? Although it may beautify and be a benefit to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For our second reader submitted question, I'm going to turn things over to RD.
Please state any of your conflicts of interest and describe how they may impact your work on the city council.
Tina, one minute to you.
Um, I've been thinking about this and I, I, at this time, I don't believe I have any conflicts of interest to serve on the city council. Uh, regarding if we were sitting on city council and something came up, uh, given a chance to be able to communicate through that exactly what, uh, what is the conflict of interest? And the only thing, again, I can think of is that, uh, if there was a conflict of interest regarding my faith and my belief in Jesus Christ, I'd have to verbalize that and, uh, go from there. And I don't suspect that that would happen. We handle things in the city council with, uh, integrity and, and, and morals and, uh, we would want to continue that and continue moving forward in that. So I don't suspect that there'll be, uh, a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Robert, would you like us to repeat the question?
Uh, no.
One minute to you.
I believe that for a conflict of interest, I don't have any. And being straight out with not having any conflict of interest, when a decision is to be made on city council, regardless of an infrastructure project or an ordinance, I will always take into account the will of the people. The people are the ones that will speak, whether they vote or they don't. It's always going to be the will of the people, 100% straightforward. And in regards to any of my personal inferences on making such a decision, it's not my decision to make. It's always the people. And if without that, you know, we, we work for the people, we do not work for ourselves. And we should never, ever take into account that when we're running for public office that we are working for ourselves.
Thank you. You'll each now have two minutes. You may revisit a previous question or bring up a new issue. Robert, we'll start with you, two minutes.
Well, I think the biggest issue that has gone on for too long is we have certain ordinances and even projects that are being proposed on our city council that really have not been vetted very well. They've, there's no questions being asked, there's just no, hardly any discussion. And especially with two ordinances in particular, one being proposed such as the, um, regulations on our homeless shelters and the other one being the abandoned building registry ordinance. Type of government overreach. You know, I am for freedoms and liberties and that we should be advocating for freedoms and liberties in our communities, supporting our nonprofits and supporting our citizens. And I do not believe that trampling on citizens' rights is a effective way to govern. I think it is a sure way of saying that, you know, when we get into office, you know, we can dictate your, your, your daily lives. And I do not believe that we should be doing that. We should be, you know, making, creating ordinances that are supposed to help us, not hurt us in the long run.
Thank you. Tina, two minutes to you.
Thank you. We relocated here from Massachusetts for a job change for my husband and when we did, we really felt like we will move into the heart of America. Rala's people love their country, love their city and love their freedom, and so do I. I'm a Christian mom, wife, caretaker, nana, and I care about Rala. I care about raising our children in a safe and thriving community. This is my first time running for a city position, but I'm willing to step up and I'm willing to learn new things and I'm willing to serve my community. I believe I can be a positive addition to Ward Six on city council. I'll listen to the people in Ward Six and advocate to be a voice for them. I have been endorsed by the Fraternal Order of Police and I want to advocate, advocate for a safe community.